I'm being the order call roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Maloney.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Mayor Peacock.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get started, I just want to thank everyone for flexing to the police department to make this happen tonight because we have a power issue at the village hall. So bear with us for those of you who are watching on YouTube or happening in the audience, bear with us with some of the differences to having full A B setup like we do back at the village halls.
Approval of the September 20th, 2021 Committee of the Hall Minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Committee of the Hall of September 20th, 2021.
Any questions? Call roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye.
An ordinance amending Title IX traffic by adding a new Chapter 13 fines and permits for overweight dimension vehicles to the Orland Park Village Code.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Maloney.
I move to recommend to the village board to pass an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Title IX traffic by adding a new Chapter 13 fines and permits for overweight dimension vehicles to the Orland Park Village Code.
Second.
Could you give us a break? The chief will be a little overdue.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, the Orland Park Police Department is seeking the opportunity now to find local municipal area any overweights or overdimensioned vehicles that are in violation in the village code here at Orland Park Village Roads. Typically in the past, we would send it to Bridgetown. They would plead that out and the money stemming from that fine would be very limited coming back to the village. Now, this vehicle would be operating in our village roads, which caused damages to our roads. That money would then be sent back to our road projects to reimburse that. These vehicles tend to be very damaging to our roads periodically due to overweights and we want to address that and bring that fine down.
Any questions or comments? Trustee Compass.
Just a real quick question. I think it's a great idea. I mean, I'd love to see that revenue come back here to help keep our roads maintained. Just out of curiosity, do we know roughly what the volume of this typically is year to year?
Again, we do some details. We do some violations periodically. It varies depending on the circumstances by, you know, we do site periodically. We decided a couple of this the other day and it sent to Bridgetown. So depending on the circumstances, I don't want to say a guess, it's probably about 25 to 50 vehicles per year that would be able to site.
Any other comments? Call roll.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye.
Authorization to sign the OX Cart Permit System User Agreement.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to recommend to the village board to approve the use of the OX Cart Permit Systems.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye.
Recreation Fee Changes.
Mr. Chairman. Trustee Healy.
I move to recommend to the village board to approve increasing drop-in, open gym soccer fees for residents, non-resident, youth, eighth grade and under, and non-resident high school and older, and increase gym and soccer field rentals for all rental categories in all recreation and parks facilities, effective November 1st, 2021, and to adopt a new fee structure for the Civic Center, which introduces a nonprofit fee, a fee for Orland Park businesses, and adds a fee distinction between rentals, which are resident, non-resident, and Orland Park, non-Orland Park businesses, effective November 1st, 2021.
Second. Ray, could you give us an update, please?
Happy to do that. Good evening. Okay, so we have three different things that I'm proposing to the board to consider. Sports Flex Open Gym Fees, drop-in user fees for the gym and the soccer field, and restructuring the Civic Center fees. And part of this is just in response to the ever-increasing prices. We know minimum wage is going up to $12 an hour in January and will continue to increase through 2025. And of course, our supplies, services continue to increase. We have increased, we haven't increased our drop-in fees for soccer and open gym since 2015. You can see our 2019 rates, the last time we did a good measurement, so when it comes up that residents, we had 12,415 visits, non-resident, eighth grade and under were 3,151, and non-resident high school and under were 2,251. Our current fees for residents are $4, for eighth grade and under is $8, and for high school and older is $15. We're proposing a modest increase, so for residents, just $1, $5, for non-residents, eighth grade and under, $2 to $10, and non-resident, high school and older, $17. That would bring, increase our projected revenues 21% to 132,000 a year in just open gym fees. We're also proposing increasing our fees for the gym and soccer use. You can see here the breakdown of how the gyms are currently, and soccer fields are currently being used. Resident organizations, 730 hours in so far in 2021. Groups that have 50 to 90% residents, 90 hours, and below 49% is 30 hours. The gym's a little bit busier with residents using 1,320 hours, non-residents 50 to 90% 30 hours, and you'll see a pretty big number there for low 49% for non-residents. And that really is because OYA canceled their season last year due to COVID, and so we rented the gym, which was a good opportunity to generate some additional revenue. We do expect the resident numbers to jump October through December as new seasons kick in. Last increase for the gym and soccer fields was in 2018. Again, we're just proposing a modest increase of $5 per hour for each of our categories, both the soccer fields and the gym. Projected revenues would be an increase of about 7%, so using Sports Flex FLC and Orland Park Health and Fitness Center, we project an increase to $305,205. The Civic Center currently has a rate structure that includes a community outreach, so it's an outdated structure that has inconsistent application of fees, so we want to correct that. It also has individual private fees, which does not include fees for residents and non-residents or businesses and professional organizations. It also has a wedding and reception fee, again lacking resident and non-resident fee structures. A little hard to see there, but that's the current rate structure. So you can see the individual private events and then the wedding reception events. We have rates for Monday to Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Weddings don't typically take place during the week, so we just have Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Majority of our revenues do come on the weekends, and so that's why you see those higher fees on the weekends. The proposed rate structure that we want to introduce, it has a non-for-profit fee including 501(c)(3), has business professional organization fees, and introduces both resident and resident fees for individuals, businesses, weddings, and receptions. A little, again, a little bit hard to see there. You can see the new rate structure over on the left that is the non-for-profit fee with the 501(c)(3) charitable organizations, Monday to Thursday, business fees, Monday to Thursday, residents, again, Monday to Thursday, and again, we don't provide a wedding or wedding reception fee during the week. And then if you play that off across the right, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the fees increase exponentially more on Friday, more on Saturday, which is a prime day, and then on Sundays. Non-resident fee is $50 more per hour, and so that adds levy to non-residents, which did not have before, so we think that's appropriate for all the fee categories there. The projected revenue increase would be 3.5%. Our per revenue is about $121,000. We really expect that to get closer to $200,000 by the end of the year with the increased number of rentals. So again, just a quick summary, we hope to do all these fees or activate all these fees beginning November 1st, that would be the open gym, open soccer, the hourly rates for the soccer field and gym, and Civic Center fees, as you see there, for nonprofit 501(c)(3), introducing a business professional organization fees, resident, non-resident fees for individual business and wedding receptions. And again, this is really due to the overall cost increases that we're experiencing in these facilities.
Any questions? Any questions?
Accountant.
Or a comment? Trustee Reardon.
Yeah, I mean, for someone who, you know, drops their kids out there routinely and someone who's rented the courts and rented the basketball, rented the soccer field as a coach, I think it's completely reasonable. We, as part of OYA and soccer, we increase ours, you know, a little bit every year, and that you haven't done it for six years. So that actually seems reasonable, and I'm always a proponent of the people who use it pay a little more for it. You know, the residents who don't use it, you know, they pay something in their taxes and in their fees for other, you know, general things. People who use it more over a course of five years, it's not a lot to ask, so I think it's a timely time to raise the fees.
Question for the drop-ins, if they're members, they don't have to pay a fee for their own.
Right.
Any other comments? Sorry, I've had it again. Call roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye.
2021 Land Development Code Amendments 2.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Radiszewski.
I move to recommend to the board of trustees to approve the Land Development Code Amendments as fully referenced below.
Second.
Hey, if you could please give us an update.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Ray, I'll remember.
And being that there are so many, we may stop you at each little section.
I tried to provide it as a bridge to the summary as possible, so, but if there are specifics.
But as you go through each one and talk about it, we may have interrupted your briefing to ask those questions that have been served up.
Absolutely.
If we ask my intention, I want to say something.
So to walk through the, this round of code amendments have a series of substantive amendments as well as a series of clarification amendments that were associated with development services and engineering programs and services. So I'm going to walk through the amendments associated with development services and show Marquez's village engineers to hear for the engineering changes. So to get started, we revised the residential district lot coverage bonus applications, and the main thing to key off of here is we're not changing the requirements for lot coverage, the base lot coverage amount, and the total amounts for a bonus for lot coverage are remaining the same. We are adjusting how you would be able to achieve those bonuses in lot coverage. And right now, for example, one of the bonuses that our code offers is if you have a rain sensor that is on your irrigation system, you get a 5% bonus for lot coverage. So in some instances, that's causing people to install irrigation systems to get a bonus for the reduction of stormwater. Simply doesn't make sense, but also there are other provisions in village code that require a rain sensor to install an irrigation system anyway, so we're giving them a bonus for something that's already required. What we're proposing is a more simplified way of calculating the lot coverage bonus. So for each square of permeable papers that's installed in lieu of impervious surface, so in lieu of asphalt or concrete, they'll get a half square foot of lot coverage allotted to their specific lot, I suppose.
And those are for permeable papers only, not for typical papers?
Not for typical papers, and those would have to be verified. Additionally, if they are going to install naturalized landscape, which is a difficult concept for some people to ascertain, we're going to provide some documentation on how to actually install a, an actual naturalized landscape area. But for each additional square foot of naturalized area, they'll get a one square foot bonus of lot coverage. And for each gallon of water contained by a rain barrel, dry well, or rain garden, they'll get a one and a half square foot of lot coverage. All of these must meet installation and performance requirements that will likely come by way of review through engineering, and then we'll have to maintain that record of the property that these exist, that they got these bonus. So future owners, if they remove it, would not be subject to that bonus or may have to adjust what their lot.
So if I read number two correctly, your typical, your typical landscape bed would get one square foot per square foot, is that correct, or does it have to have specific plantings?
It has to have specific plantings that are designed to retain more water, and they're actually more prone to retaining actual water, so as opposed to a typical landscape bed. The next, this is one that's, we've taken a few developments and we've been moving towards this from a general policy direction. This is requiring that the private maintenance of residential stormwater facilities and ponds. As of right now, the code allows for both, for residential developments, for both public and private maintenance as possibilities, but what we've learned is the village currently maintains over 100, about approximately 170 ponds, and the financial burden of that is significant. In order to get a handle on exactly how to solve that issue, one of the ways to move forward is to require that the stormwater facilities and or pond that's associated with the residential development will be first, have to be maintained by homeowners' association, and then while the project is being developed, they will have to create a dormant special service area specifically for the purposes of the maintenance responsibilities that the HOA has. If they're not able to meet those, then the village has the opportunity to call on that SSA and provide a funding source for the necessary maintenance and potential improvements for the stormwater system. So it's something we've discussed for some time, that this is the code amendment that allows it, and essentially just changes the language from the village accepting these ponds to the village approving them. And we're still responsible for enforcing the maintenance and things like that, but the financial burden will be placed on the homeowners or the HOA. This is an amendment that came up recently that there are, we're requiring screening on pools on corner lots. So in the instance that a code compliant above-ground pool is placed in the location that's marked on the exhibit, that would be allowable except, but from an aesthetic point of view, it's not exceptionally pleasing to the neighbors or the people that are driving or around in that subdivision. So what this requires is a typical pool requires five-foot tall barrier. This will require a five-foot tall privacy fence be installed along the area where the pool is.
Five or six?
Or six, I apologize, six. So that just, that achieves the same goal of safety, but also provides a better aesthetic for the neighborhood. The current, yeah.
Trustee Healy.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
In the village code, it says that sheds are supposed to be behind the house, and yet we can put swimming pools off to the side.
Well, technically, but what technically this means they're behind the house. Like this, technically this is behind the house, but, but I see what you're saying is a shed has to be in the rear, and we do have, the code says that a pool can be located inside. That is true.
Okay, so pools are favored instead of sheds?
Pools, playground pools are allowed in the side yard, yeah.
Okay. Well, after sheds being, I don't see why we have.
Above-ground pools allowed inside?
They are not allowed in the side yard.
So this would fall under what?
This is in the rear yard, but it would, it's technically the way it's allotted there, it's still in the rear yard, because it's behind the rear building line.
So technically a shed could go there too?
Yeah.
Shed couldn't go there.
It is, because it's in the rear yard.
But it's got to be behind the house, I thought.
It is behind the house.
It is behind the house.
Because the front of the house actually faces toward, well, see, because it's burning drive, that's where the driveway is, that's technically the front. The rear is where the highlighted portion is, and then the sides are the other two areas in between the front building line and the rear building line. Yeah, so this, all this area here beyond this line is the rear yard. This is all the front yard and the two sides.
So to trusty he's point, how do we handle the shed? We should get at the same problem where the shed can basically be outside their front window.
That's very true. So what we could adjust this amendment to, not specific, we made the change specifically to pools, but in any instance where something is in a corner or in a rear yard that abuts a street, we can require the same privacy fence, if that's, if the board chooses to make that change.
I would entertain a motion to amend this, to amend this motion to include sheds and other storage items or storage buildings to follow the same rules as pools.
So move. Mr. Suckett.
Any comments on that?
Any. So does that any accessory?
Any accessory structure? Okay.
Just so I'm clear, do they even have to have like a privacy fence around like a shed thing?
Well, they, so, yeah, so our example is, so if they put a shed at the very top of that.
Yeah, where the, where the purple is, yeah.
Right there, they put a shed right there off to the, you know, right at the corner of the, right at the corner of the lot line up there.
Right.
So to the left, so all the way up, all the way up, right at that, that corner right there, the red corner, which is, because it has to be outside the east end.
Right.
To come down a little bit, there you go. If it was right there, they would have to have some kind of a privacy fence. If they moved it back behind their house.
They don't have to, yeah.
Then they don't have to do that, but if they put it there where you could see, you'd be looking at it right out of your front window.
Yeah, for example, if they didn't have this patio area, it didn't really necessarily abut the street right away that's here, it wouldn't cause much provision.
Then they wouldn't have to do it, but they don't have to do it, but it's that side area.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
Could we make that for any outdoor apparatus, like a pergola, doghouse, or I mean, any other structure?
We, with the recommendation from the committee, we can look to make, adjust the language so it's, it would cover all of those different types and not just specific to sheds and pools.
Okay. Any other comments? Call roll. On the amendment to all other, to any sheds or any other accessory structures.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye.
And as a side comment, when we see subdivisions again or something like that, let's try and have them orient the house or the backyard, so there isn't that, this issue, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if you put the house where it's facing the curve, right, then they have slightly bigger side yards on either side, but they're not really, but they're not really usable for pools or anything else, and then they have a bigger backyard, they could put all those without these issues. That makes more sense?
It does.
Okay, so if we see this again in a subdivision, let's make sure we don't make similar choices.
So the next amendment is the, for the outside storage of trucks. So the substantive amendment that's being proposed is essentially that if you were to propose any type of truck parking, even of those in our manufacturing area and our R.I. district, it would have to have been, could not be more than, it had to be in an outside storage area specifically, it couldn't be parked in a standard parking space unless it was in a loading zone. Those were, previously, those were the only regulations. So this is extremely limiting to try infill space if someone has several box trucks or they don't have the designated loading spot at the business that they're attempting to locate in, but this gives them the opportunity, the amendment will clarify that all vehicles can pick that are, all vehicles that are subject to like the work and the essential operation of the business, so long as they are not exceeding 19,500 pounds, which is the Federal Highway Administration's classification for Class V of trucks. They have a series of classifications for trucks. We're limiting it at 19,500 pounds for them to basically accommodate some larger delivery vehicles and potentially some, what we looked into is for some of our signed manufacturers, a bucket truck, and things of that nature, would be allowed to, still be allowed, would be parked in loading areas, but additionally, they'd also be able to be parked on-site if they didn't exceed the size of, the size requirement. If they exceed any portions of that, then they would have to designate an outdoor storage area, which would have to include screening, which would include an eight-foot tall fence, and year-round landscaping that the exhibit kind of shows. So it's not an all, it's basically becoming more accommodating to trucks that are used on an everyday basis, but it's not allowing for additional outdoor storage.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
Do you know anybody that's in violation of this right now?
Potentially.
Okay.
I guess.
A storage truck.
It's, there's potentially violations right now. I guess what you're saying is are there active code titles?
They've been doing it for so long, and it's been, if they're doing it right now.
Well, there's, I guess, there's, there's a couple, there's a couple different ways to answer that question. There's, they potentially were allowed to do that by some previous approval that would supersede what is on the books today. There's potentially an active code case against them, or they are doing that and we haven't been aware of that yet. So those are kind of the options, if that is something that is happening.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
With this taking into account, I've noticed several times, I think I brought it to somebody's attention not long ago, along Southwest Highway, north of 143rd, there's some businesses to, if you're going, if you're going north, there's businesses off to your right, there's an open area on the side of Southwest Highway. And not all the time, but I've noticed, you know, several times, more than once, there'll be trucks parked, there'll be semis, there'll be some business trucks, like, I don't know what the businesses, I can't remember right now, but they have like four or five of their trucks there. Are they just parking it there? I mean, are they allowed to? Is this what this is kind of addressing?
So this is.
You're talking about first man, does that make sense?
This is a separate issue that this is addressing, but the businesses that you're referring to, that was a, started as code enforcement case where they started to lease that space for out, just outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment. The village went in, they went through a formal engineering approval, and they were given conditions that they're adhering to now or that they should be adhering to. And the issue with that is that area, although screened by landscaping and some fencing, the residential area adjacent to them is much higher, so there isn't really a level of screening that can accommodate the residents' requests because their elevation of where they're at is so much higher than where the building sits. But yes, that, what that's, what they had to come to, into compliance with would be what was already on the books, and this is to help accommodate existing businesses in, or new businesses in existence space. So the FHA chart, classification chart, so this is directly from them, and it shows eight different classifications of trucks, some very general descriptions of what these could mean, and we made the cutoff at Class V, given some of the businesses that are already in the village. And that's the actual amendment. Essentially, just to sum it up, if there's anything that doesn't meet the requirements of what someone is requesting, they have the ability to request it via special use permit and take it to the board for special consideration. So that's incorporated in the amendment as well. And then the other clarification amendments were, we revised our bicycle parking to add a preferred design type, and also that accommodates basically that there should be two points of contact for the, like, flipping over. Previously, the bicycle parking requirement only applied to commercial uses, now it applies to multifamily excluding townhomes. And then the next clarification amendment was store fence transparency. Again, that was only applicable to the vote center district. The revisions made it applicable to all of the commercial districts because occasionally what we've seen is tends to have the ability, or the, they want to black out these windows, so to keep that from happening, we've added those regulations to the other districts as well. The final, the side code language, we have very specific requirements in what regards tenant frontage. We want to clarify that just because a frontage may face a parking lot, it has to face a parking lot that serves the business. In addition to that, assigned face area bonus is given if, to include not only public right-of-ways that they have frontage along, but. lot that serves the business. In addition to that, assigned face area bonus is given if, to include not only public right-of-ways that they have frontage along, but also private right-of-ways, we're talking about a plan code. So those were the changes associated, or that affect development services.
So regarding the bikes?
Yes.
So what now is included, I noticed that in the plan development, that the requirements are actually reduced. Directly, there used to be one every 10 parking spots, now it's, now it's one every 10 units, which is going to be less than one every 10 parking.
Correct.
Correct. And then what else were the changes there with bikes?
So the change here, the actual code language was reflected in what you see. So we gave the design criteria for some preferred examples of what we'd like to see, and then how, so that they...
You mentioned multifamily, that's only as part of the plan development, correct? Was that written there?
So it would be, it would be for mixed-use developments as part of the plan development, and yeah, and it would be applied to multifamily. The change that the Plan Commission requested is that it not be applicable to townhome developments because just generally where would you locate it, it would be a difficult picture.
And that's reflected in this, what people...
Correct.
You know, I read their commentary, and I agree with their commentary, this idea that we're suddenly going to be, that's how people are going to get to Orland Park because they're always riding bicycles, it's just, it's a pipe dream, I'm relying on it, we're just going to be getting here by car. And, you know, same thing with even, you know, it's great that we have all this train transportation, but the thought that people are going to be coming from Chicago to visit Orland Park by train is probably also, unless they have no people that live here, that they're going to see, probably doesn't come up. So it's probably not, it's just not an end destination point like it is if you go to the city of Chicago from the train, you get off at the end, it's just, it's just not the way we are, and I don't think it's going to be that way in our lifetime, so I thought their comments were well taken, so I'm glad they're required, that there's still some requirements, but that they're reduced.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Compass?
I did have one other comment. I know we moved quickly through this, I apologize, we're moving backwards a little bit, but to the stormwater facilities, more just a question, I mean, I saw the notes that the Plan Commission discussed this as well, we've certainly seen occasions where the privately-owned facilities have gone to disrepair, and then the village is left with a pretty substantial bill trying to fix that. So I guess the question is, what do we do to proactively police to ensure that these facilities are going to be maintained to the specifications?
Sure. The, right now, the process is, is the developers have to adhere to a three-year maintenance monitoring program in order for the village previously to accept a pond or any, or in this case, to approve it. So for three years, they have to meet certain milestones in order for the village to approve the pond. And basically, that is the outline for what HOA would need to do in order to maintain the pond so that we wouldn't ever have to call on that SSA or it wouldn't come back to the village, right? So our intent is, once the developer is making that transition from their, the transition to the homeowners association, that we'll be using that document to educate those that are going to take it over and record it against the property, so that information is available to them. In addition to that, we can identify specific contractors that are well-versed in actually making these survive and maintaining them properly.
Okay, so that's, that's good. We're training the owners on how to do it and give them access to that. As far as the religious responsibility, how often are we chucked in on these privately-owned resources?
And one of the things on stormwater ponds, I know this has come up before in previous boards, is that we have over 100 already, and now we're going to be asking other people to carry a different burden than what the existing residents do, and I get that, I understand it, and it's a discussion we've had multiple times, we're going forward with this, and I understand that point of view, but also I'll go back to even, you know, the 70s here where developers were then, you know, suddenly started to be asked to provide land and provide parks and provide all this that wasn't done before, so, and obviously that baked into price of homes and everything else, so it's not like we don't have long precedent of this, that as a town grows and adds resources and such change, that, you know, that there, unfortunately, is a fee, if you will, to move into Orland Park, and that's part of, and that's what that is, I mean, it's, it's a cost to new residents that want to live here, that want to come to this community. We hope they keep that cost as low as possible, that's why we want native areas because they don't require as much maintenance. Even though some people don't like them, that's one of the reasons we do it, it's more eco-friendly, a lot less maintenance, a lot better for the habitats of everything around us, so that's why we do that. So, so I think this is a good change, and, you know, we're, at the end of the day, we'll have to have a ton, a lot more subdivisions coming in, so maybe a little bit of small percentage, hopefully they just take care of their various pieces of property.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to cover the proposed engineering changes. So I'll go through them piece by piece here. So Section 301, we established an engineering department, we used to be part of development services, so this was an obvious one to do, establish that department. Section 512, 112 at point E, guarantees our improvements. What we did here typically require for letter credit, 125% of the amount of the letter credit, but we always had a 7%, or recently, last year, introduced the 7% management fee in case we had the code letter credit, but it's just corrected the percentage in the code to say 125, it's technically 132. So we just wanted to have that corrected. And then assigned the oversight to the engineering department, it still references public works in the code, and that's outdated. Dry wells, so with the abundance of clay, we had no real requirements for fluid durability, and in some cases, they're not a good solution. So we established a form of ability requirement, and then...
You know, water just sits in the clay and just stays?
Yes, exactly, and it causes swamp issues, thanks to, so, or connects to the storm sewer system, so it would hold water for a period, then drain the storm sewer system, eventually dry out for a longer period of time, this place, like, you know, it's very... Fences, so we didn't, we started addressing flow underneath fences, we found a lot of people put the fences even to ground, and this would just block natural overland flow, so we wanted a three-inch gap as a standard.
And in the code, doesn't it say for solid fences? Because obviously fences that had, you know, that are ornamental fences, they go all the way around because there's nothing in the flow.
It doesn't reference the difference, but I can make an exception for, I'm just going to go with open grain fence type styles.
I'll entertain a motion to amend, to amend the code, to make an exception for fences that are, allow waters to move through them.
So move.
Second, trustee Compass?
Any questions or comments on that? Call roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Cassinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malati?
Aye.
Trustee Rieden?
Aye.
Trustee Reschewski?
Aye.
Mayor Peet?
Aye.
So the second part of that is, sometimes there's large overland flow routes through the area, it's very far, few and far between, but in case that needed, it may have to be hardened fringes, or in this case, it might have to be an open-style fence, so that water flows through, but that rarely happens, but just needed in case we run into it. So we have Section 6405D, pavement thickness, so our code had outdated references to the type of thickness we allowed. The main one was the surface, it said one inch, we stand today, the minimum is one and a half inch. So we adjusted that, I also adjusted for the binder thickness, which is the second layer, in range of the two and a quarter inches, that's the standard we use today. Bring that current traffic study. So we looked at lowering the requirement threshold for commercial industrial from 3,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet, and a lot more oversight for engineering. This came into play because there's instances now where we're building in areas that was established traffic, a lot of traffic, and some of these types of businesses, even though they'll be under 3,000 square feet, but they could, they have high volume usage for traffic-wise, and it could impact greatly existing system, so we want to have a better handle on that, and that's why we want more discretion as to allowing it, requiring it, and then not having it requirement received.
So it allows you to make it a requirement over 10,000 feet, but you don't have to make it a requirement?
Yeah.
If you say, hey, this is not the issue here?
Yeah, it looks, for example, like anything around 159th and the Grange, that's, that's our probably busiest intersection, if we have something generating a lot of...
So this makes something between 10 and 30,000 square feet. In order to not do it, it would be an exception granted by engineering as opposed to otherwise they need to have done.
So previously, it was previously 30,000 square feet and went down to 10,000.
Correct, correct. What I'm saying is, is now, it's, now, at 10,000 feet, they have to do it unless we give them an exception.
Right.
So as opposed to us asking for 10,000 feet for sales, not in the code, why would we partner with them, correct?
Yes, and we've had that happen to us, potentially. So 6406B, driveway apron slope, we established a maximum slope for new driveways at 8%, didn't have anything in code, and then there's an exception for existing driveways, if you love to maintain it, they can, and it's above currently, they can maintain it in code. Sanitary system, so we started adding requirements for encapsulation systems or external ceiling systems, basically at the top of the structure. It's to prevent rent inflow infiltration, which is basically means it doesn't allow stormwater to come into our sanitary system, it's just abnormal for treatment. That was one change we did, and the other one was the TY connector requirements, so how the service would connect to the main line, how that would work, and we found, tried to specify in a better way, so we had a more standard process for that, instead of getting kind of opposing different methods. And then storm sewers, so we're allowing for basically a plastic pipe, we didn't really have, in the code allowed for plastic pipe, and made the lowest requirement for new storm sewer, 12 inches. Obviously, if it's existing storm sewer, there's exceptions, because we're not going to put a larger storm sewer flowing through a smaller storm sewer. Those are all substantial changes, you know, the rest are pretty just basic ones verifying the code. So Section 302C accessory structures, basically any accessory structure is not going to be allowed in the Eastman, we don't want them in there. The code didn't really specify that in a concrete way, we wanted to make sure that was the case. We also redefine tents and basketball court sections to sport court, just to make them more general. Section 409E, storm sewers, stormwater retention, we added language for underdrain installation, so with a lot of these findings, they put a lower level in the basins, and we want to make sure we don't get ponds standing water that we don't want, which would kill the plant life, it's too much water. So we gave ourselves more discretion to, we need more underdrain, we require that, the type of plants that want to grow there. Section 305B and E, landscape tree preservation, so we added language regarding underburdened Schedule R. So what Schedule R is or underburdened is, if someone builds a retention basin, have a can of structure for boundary control or even underground retention, it's recorded against their property on the Schedule R form, which says they're going to maintain it, and the next owner knows it's the responsibility to maintain it perpetuity, so it's just another form to have the property owners understand, like, here's just what you're buying for commercial aspects. Sections 512, 6305, 6406, 6415C, we just added language for engineering department, director of engineering, because we oversee those aspects and corrected some spots where it's a building division to build services. Last page here, Sections 6406, 6408, just updated high specification references, they're confusing, weren't really clear, and then updated a reference to the standards of base for water sewer main, fresh in Illinois, say latest additions of the year, you don't kind of want to do that. And then these multiple sections, the last one, just as director of engineering, replacement engineer for oversight on engineering department. Those are all the changes. Any additional questions?
Any other questions? Call roll on the amended motion.
Trustee Reschewski? Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Cassinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malati?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Rieden?
Aye.
Mayor Peet?
Aye.
Approve the Village of Orland Park, Illinois interim report for the state and local fiscal recovery funds part of the American Rescue Plan Act.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm trustee Malati.
I move to recommend to the village board approving the Village of Orland Park, Illinois interim report for the state and local fiscal recovery funds part of the American Rescue Plan Act.
Trustee Reschewski, stand. Can you give us an update on that, please?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, trustees. I'll tell you about a brief overview of the American Rescue Plan Act, specifically coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds and how it impacts Orland Park. There's also an agenda item, a resolution I'm going to discuss a little bit as part of this presentation. So first, I'm going to talk about the coronavirus local recovery fund, our interim report, what the eligible spending categories are, how it affects Orland Park, and what we are currently intending to utilize those funds for. Then when I talk about the resolution, we talk about the categories of cities and what specifically is meant by metropolitan cities, and then to further discuss Orland Park's specific allocation. So the American Rescue Plan Act is infusing billions of dollars, in fact, 350 billion dollars, intended to turn the tide of a pandemic. So what I'm going to focus specifically relates to the coronavirus state and local recovery funds, it's two very similar but separate programs. The, there was a concept of metropolitan cities, and these are cities and villages that are over 50,000 in population, and they get funds directly from the federal government. Non-entitlement units or cities and villages that are below $50,000 or 50,000 in population get their funds allocated to the states and then distributed to those NEUs or non-entitlement units. When we talk about non-entitlement units, what I'm talking about is what the plan refers, the legislation refers to community development block grant entitlements, so entitlement communities typically are over 50,000 and meet certain criteria, but I'll discuss that a little bit more later. According to legislation and the guidance, there are specific spending categories that these funds can be utilized for: support public health, address negative economic impacts, replace lost public sector revenue, and then invest in certain types of water sewer broadband infrastructure. Within these categories, recipients can have some broad latitude, some broad flexibility to decide how best to meet their community's needs. There are specific restrictions that these funds cannot be used to pay down debt or make in pension contributions. They really want funds to go into projects, and so there's some churn, some economic churn based on where that money is going. So Orland Park is going to utilize the revenue reduction or the lost revenue component. In the guidance, based on the last four or five years of nationwide data, local government own-source revenue increased by 4.1%, so that is the percentage increase identified in the legislation. Where we, any dollars less than a 4.1% increase can be identified as a revenue reduction. There's also, if there was greater growth, we could use a higher percentage if we had greater growth. We did not have higher growth during those preceding three or four years, so we can apply the 4.1%. So from 2019, the audited financial statements in 2019 to 2020, we actually had a revenue reduction of $8.7 million. We have been allocated just over $5 million, so we have the ability to identify all our allocated money as lost revenue or revenue replacement revenue reduction. So what we're planning to utilize these monies, the money for is the design and the renovation components phases of our community parks, and we heard a presentation from Ray a couple weeks ago discussing that overall program, and we think these are, this is a very good application of these funds because it meets a lot of the criteria that is intended by this program, specifically promoting equitable outcomes with the broad variety of abilities and interests that we will be meeting the category, meeting the objectives of broad variety of interests and abilities throughout the community, so providing additional infrastructure and amenities for a wide variety of folks. We had a great deal of community engagement through meetings with community groups and individuals, reaching out to residents with survey instruments and things along those lines, and providing that option available to all residents in the community. to all residents in the community. It results in added services, benefits, MMDs for of all interests and abilities. Now, we don't have a specific budget that's going to be developed throughout the master plan portion of it, but that we think hits a lot of the objectives intended by the programs. So just to speak for a moment on the resolution. So there's a resolution tonight requesting that Orland Park be treated like other non-entitlement units in Illinois. So as I mentioned, the legislation treats, the term is metropolitan cities, and that's for any city or village that's over 50,000 in population. And that includes CBGB entitlement cities and non-entitlement cities. There's not a differentiation in legislation that those two categories of communities are treated differently. They are both allocated funds based on criteria, the CBGB criteria. So the entitlement communities have a certain need, and so they're measured to those standards. And then there are communities that are measured by those same criteria that do not meet those objectives and meet those needs. So they're basically treated differently. For non-entitlement units, there's no consideration on any CBGB criteria. They are provided funding through the states on a per capita basis. So the CBGB criteria include items such as poverty, population, housing overcrowding, and age of home. And in these categories, Orland Park rates well, which means we, it's the inverse of CBGB criteria. So we are not an entitlement city. So we do not measure well to achieve additional funding in CBGB criteria. In Illinois, there are 46, what's termed in metropolitan cities. Of those 46, 35 of those, most of those are CBGB communities, entitlement communities. They have been allocated more than $135 and 94%, 90% per person. And that's the rate that the non-entitlement communities in Illinois are receiving under this act. There are 11 metropolitan cities in Illinois that have been allocated less than that because they don't meet the CBGB criteria that are identified. In fact, when we did the calculations, Orland Park has the lowest per capita allocation of any metropolitan city, of any city in Illinois at $86.59 per resident. So our current allocation is just over $5 million based on the criteria. If we were to receive the same allocation per resident, that would be 7.85 million dollars. That's a difference of about two, over 2.85 million dollars. So this specific resolution intends to ask the state to make Orland Park whole and keep our, or make us whole with the $135.94 per person that is in Orland Park. As you can see, the current allocation of the total amount, we're getting about 64 cents on the dollar compared to the, if we were provided the full allocation at $135.94. So that's the, that's the overview of what I was talking about tonight. If there are, you have any answer questions that you may have?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy.
Kevin, is, who makes the decision on whether approvals are required? Is it the feds or is it the state?
What this resolution is intending to send it to the states. Because we had discussions with federal officials, and they, they are implemented with folks from the United States.
I think you're inflating that two issues. So the resolution is to the state, this, what we're approving right now is the report for the state and local fiscal recovery funds, which is part of the American Rescue Plan Act. Where does that go? That goes to the feds, correct?
The interim report goes to the feds, yes.
Yeah. So what we're approving right now is for the feds. The resolution that's coming later tonight is going to the state.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reschewski.
So out of those 11 metropolitan cities, how does that rank? Why is Orland Park the lowest out of all of them?
It's because of when Orland Park was developed and how we measure up in the CBGB categories like poverty, housing overcrowding, and age of homes. Based on when Orland Park grew, we ranked well, like we do not meet the objectives of CBGB communities. So it just, the way the rankings hit Orland Park, it did not go well for us. I'll talk about this more later, but there were basically two calculations, and you get the highest amount of those two calculations. One calculation uses population, poverty, and overcrowded housing. In other words, designed to give more money to poor communities. The second way uses population, housing built before 1940, and growth rates since 1960. In other words, let's make sure we don't give money to successful suburban communities because that's when suburbs really popped up, was after 1940. So, and what you will see of the 11 towns is that they are, for the most part, successful suburban communities. The 11 towns include Chalmers, Biscayne, Mount Prospect, Bolingbrook, Timney Park, Coffin Estates, Dallas Grove, Lee, Arlington, Ice Bay, Little Millard Park. So for the most part, rapid growth. I mean, it's essentially designed to fund money towards cities that have not managed themselves well and were built before 1940. That's what it was, that's what's happening.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Hirdan.
Yeah, my comment was going to be back to the first part of it. We have to file this report to show them that we're spending the money wisely. So before, the second part is about how much we get. And I agree with the mayor, it's carving out legislation that they do all the time. I mean, they clearly are targeting where they want the money to go to. They know they got to be a little bit fair, so they're coming up with these criteria to give us some. But going back to the first part of it, it seems like that's pretty straightforward. We tick off almost every box by committing with our parks. So if anyone's, you know, ever questioned us on that, this is a program we already had started in place. This is a nice backfill. It's not exactly the money we lost. We haven't lose the $8 million because of our parks, but this is something that we can take the revenue to and put forward because we know it's an expense that's coming up, and that's okay to do. It looks like it's, the report should be well received, you think, right?
I believe so. It's a critical infrastructure of Orland Park. It's something, the parks and the amenities in the park are something that are very near and dear to the community.
And broad-based.
Yes, broad-based. It's a benefit to a wide cross-section of residents and non-residents.
And to put the dollar value into perspective, Congress is essentially saying that the citizens of East St. Louis are worth 16 times more than the people of Orland Park. They're saying the citizens of Chicago are worth eight times more than the people of Orland Park. Oak Park has got 50, has got about 52,000 people, a little over, because this is last census data, it's what this base of, we've got almost 58,000 people. We're getting 5 million, they're getting 38 million. They have a higher household income than we do head spent. Home of Northwestern is getting 43 million, or about seven times more per person than we're getting. So that's what's happening. I'm going to have more comments on this, on the resolution, as you might imagine, but that's what's happening. Trustee Malati.
I think you pretty, Kevin pretty much answered most of my questions I had, and you just hit the topic that I was looking at. And it's just, it's amazing how you look at this and how the CBGB equation can be, the inputs can be tweaked, and that's where the money flows. It's disturbing, to say the least.
And it's legislative. It's, the treasury can't do anything about it. It's by law. So your congressman voted for this. Both of the congressmen of Orland Park voted to do this to you. To be very perfectly clear, they voted to do this to you. And Timney Park, by the way, is also getting less. And all the South suburbs are getting $135.94. City Chicago's getting $700. This just continues and continues and continues and continues to ignore this region. Bolingbrook, less than, less than average. Timney Park, less than average. I mean, you see the trend. And even the towns that, the two, of the towns that got over $135.94, there were, they just had 35 of them. The bottom two of those 35, O'Long and Julianne. So it just doesn't change. I mean, this region is ignored, and Orland Park was survived. But what about the other communities? Any other comments on this? So revenue reduction, just to put this in perspective, is 8.7 million dollars. Okay? And that's, that's based on the formula we actually probably, a little bit, because we budget conservatively, we weren't 8.7 million dollars short, we were about five?
Right. This didn't.
Right. I'm just saying we were about five, right? Just so the public can understand. But if you recall, way back when COVID started, and, you know, I had this conversation with George at the then board, we had this discussion, and we said, we're not going to hit the panic button. We had made a lot of good choices. We'd taken over $40 million of debt off the books. We didn't need to pan. We still cut where it made sense, but we did cut capital expenditures. We had quit fixing our roadblock parks because that would just can down the road. So we made, we trimmed some things that we could, but for the most part, we kept, we operated as normal, is what we did. Because we were in a good fiscal position because of the three years prior to that. And it's really important to point out that we did that. And the other thing, and I'm sure George would not have had this, my comment was, expect nothing from the feds. Expect nothing from the state. And we're going to operate as if we're going to just go on and we're going to get no help. Because the last place they're going to want to help is a town like Bolingbrook, even though we were impacted more by revenue losses than any other town south of I-88. I think there's no doubt about that, given our size and the like. So, but that was our position. Because of that, taking that position and operating with the expectation of getting nothing, now we're able to take the 5 million, yeah, we're getting shorted, but what we are getting, and we're going to be able to use that for something that's important for the whole community, our parks. So it's because of all the decisions that we made over the last couple of years, including the previous board, that allowed, that put us in this position so that we can do this. And actually, in other places, our, other places are plugging their gaps. They're plugging holes. We don't have any holes to plug. We're actually, you know, advance things that are good for residents. So just keep that in mind. It's because of the fiscal discipline of the board, of staff, and all the hard work of all of our employees. And I think that happened over the course of the last year, so I don't want that involved in this. Call roll.
Trustee Malati.
Aye.
Trustee Reschewski.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Hirdan.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Rental housing fee changes, bill of code, section 582.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malati.
Move to recommend to the village board of trustees to approve an ordinance that incorporates the changes to the village code, section 5-8-1, as fully described in the above staff report.
Second.
Give us a brief summary.
Sure. Currently, the rental housing code requires that, there aren't any slides to steer with this, but currently, the rental housing code is, requires a $50 registration fee, plus they're inspected on a triangle basis. So every, annually, we'll get $50. And then on that inspection year, for single-family loans, we'll get $150. For what was in the code previously, duplexes, we get $200. And for any building above three units, we get $200, plus $50 for every unit above three, or above two, I'm sorry. So as you can see, it's a little bit confusing as we, that we have the code now. And there are different types of rentals that are emerging. We see a lot more rental townhomes than we did previously. So initially, we went to adjust the code to change the definitions, but what we found out, there's a subsequent problem of, a lot of landlords will understand the process when they initially register, but then they pay, for the next two years, they only pay $50. So we get a lot of calls as to why is there this button? So what we did is we looked at the current fee structure, spread it evenly across the three years, so they won't see a jump, but it incorporates the revenue that we would have received anyways. So right now.
So we basically took their three years total and divided it into three, and we pass that on. So they see the same bill every year, they plan for it, and then we inspect every three years that could get before.
And in addition to that, every single unit, there won't be a different structure. Every single, they will all pay $100 for the first unit, $15 for every additional unit afterwards, regardless of the type. So right now, the way that code, that speaks out, a single-family home will pay exactly the same as they did before, and then each other type of unit, duplex, townhome, or apartment will see a slight decrease in what they were seeing previous.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Hirdan.
Just, just to spark this up, and I just spent on mine, has there been an uptick in rental, like applications for rented property in Illinois?
I think generally, we're still seeing a lot home online. So we are seeing more, we are seeing more rental product, but we're also seeing instances where people are choosing to rent out their registrations. It's been generally consistent, but we are seeing that at least being proposed as a development project, more and more.
Yeah, we see a lot of them being proposed, but then a lot of them, they can't build by rights, so they're not being approved. I think the key thing here is to remember that we're still number one in the whole country for owner occupied homes, for towns over 20,000, and that's in the entire United States. So just have to keep that in mind. Correct. And I guess the other thing we should make sure the public knows is that we can't control someone against their, their house or their townhouse by law. They're entitled to do that if they decide to do so. We can, however, put things like this to ensure there's inspections and things like that. So.
Exactly. This is in support of our crime-free rental housing, but it makes the administration of it a little bit easier because you're eliminating all of those home calls on the inspection year as to, why, I paid $50 last year, why isn't $300?
Makes sense. Any other thoughts? Call roll.
Trustee Malati.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Hirdan.
Aye.
Trustee Reschewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Is there anybody here to speak?
That is.
Any other? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to the chairman.
So moved. Second.
Call roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malati.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Hirdan.
Aye.
Trustee Reschewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.